Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Just want to ask one simple question. Did you miss us?[12.01][12.01](laughter) All right, at least you didn't say no. I'd rather you laughed than to say no. Good morning. Thank you all for being here today. We have established our quorum. Last, any guests and visitors, please retire behind the rails. As the members take their seat, we'll get started. As for a little quiet, please. Would ask if anyone has a cellphone or any other electronic device that makes noise, will please turn it off or turn it on silent. Thank you so much. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Kevin Johnson of Dare to Imagine Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Curtis Jones. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise. Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Shall we pray? Creator, we've come this morning to the birthplace of hope and liberty. Yes, it was in 1776 that a group of men started a revolution when they articulated and made real their Declaration of Independence at a Philadelphia convention. Their dream was simple: to be free of tyranny, to be free from persecution, and yes, to be free to determine their own destiny. Some 243 years later, another group has assembled in Philadelphia to articulate and make real their own dreams for our great city. Yes, we've come this morning because we realize that there is still a crack in our nation's Liberty Bell. While the Liberty Bell is stamped with the biblical quotation, "Proclaim liberty throughout all the land and unto all the inhabitants thereof," America has yet to live up to its promise and sound a perfect note. But how can the Liberty Bell strike a perfect note when there is an ever-expanding breach between the haves and the have-nots? How can the Liberty Bell strike a perfect note when the ladders of opportunity have yet to arrive in communities that most need them? Lord, we've come this morning not just to redeem the dream, but to create and ensure a more perfect union. So this year is our new start. It is this year in which we hope that grassroots organizations, that corporations, and politicians come together to make our city stronger. This is the year in which perfection begins and the Liberty Bell's crack is filled, so that one day the Liberty Bell can sound a perfect note again, a note of justice, a note of economic equality, and yes, a note of hope and liberty for all. This is our prayer this day as we begin this new year and this new session. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you so much for those inspiring words. Thank you very much. And again, Pastor, thank you so much for your spiritual guidance today. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Monday, January 6, 2020, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Monday, January 6, 2020, be approved.
Thank you. Moving properly second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Monday, January 6, 2020, stand approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. This time, our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks you very much. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. You hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much. Unfortunately, we have no presentations today, but I'm sure we'll make up for that next week. Our next order of business is communications, and the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. And Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith to the consideration of your honorable body. Under ordinance authorizing the procurement department on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into one or more agreements with a vendor or vendors for the purchase and servicing of online legal research services, investigative tools, and related goods and services. And under ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 120 and abandonment of a certain right-of-way reserved for various public utility purposes extending from 20th Street to 21st Street, south of Oxford Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills on your behalf and one privileged resolution on my behalf that is cosponsored by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Under ordinance establishing a neighborhood improvement district to be known as the North Broad Business Improvement District. And an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 120 and abandonment of a certain right-of-way reserved for various public utility purposes extending from 20th Street to 21st Street, south of Oxford Street. And an ordinance establishing a new Chapter 17, 2300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Community Benefits Agreements and requiring community benefits agreements for certain high-impact projects or development projects to receive city support or financial assistance.
Those three bills read by the Chief Clerk will be sent to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the committees on labor and civil service and public safety to hold joint hearings regarding hiring, staffing, and retention challenges for the 911 Unified Call Center and the impact these challenges have on the health and well-being of 911 dispatchers.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two bills and four resolutions, two non-privileged and two privileged.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for a preference in civil service examinations for any qualified graduate of a career technical education program in the school district of Philadelphia as approved by resolution of the City Council.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 20, 1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Civil Service Preferences to provide for a civil service preference for qualified graduates of career technical education programs in the school district of Philadelphia.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing honoring and congratulating Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on its 100th anniversary.
And that will be today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of its 28th Annual African-American Children's Book Fair.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to conduct hearings to determine the City of Philadelphia's preparedness for the possibility of an economic recession and the strength of the Reserve Stabilization Funds.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter providing for a preference in civil service examinations for any qualified graduate of a career of career technical education program in the school district of Philadelphia and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Hi, good morning, Council President. I offer one bill cosponsored by Councilmembers Heenan, Johnson, Brooks, Bass, and Thomas, and two non-privileged resolutions, one of which I'd like to be recognized very briefly.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Afterwards.
And ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the creation of a Department of Labor and a Board of Labor Standards to provide for the powers and duties of such department and board and to otherwise provide for incorporation of the department and board into the city government.
For the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Social Security Administration to withdraw its proposed rule to review disability benefit eligibility every two years, which would put thousands of people in danger of losing their benefits over the next 10 years in the City of Philadelphia and millions of people at risk across the United States.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you very much, Council President. This resolution cosponsored with Councilmember Green and other members of council emphasizes the fact that the Trump administration is proposing to make significant rule changes that would put millions of people with serious disabilities in danger of losing their social security benefits and other disability benefits that they need to survive. In Philadelphia, that would mean that over 16,000 children could be impacted at a minimum. When this was tried in the 1980s, it led to devastating consequences, making sure that making people jump through unnecessary and oftentimes complicated hoops just to keep benefits that they have already qualified for is not based on science, it is not based on economy, is based on cruelty. It will cost billions in administrative costs for absolutely no good reason and will put our city at risk. I'm encouraging that this council should have passed it next week, we'll be able to submit this as part of our public comment period, but also asking other members and to encourage other people who are watching today to submit public comment on this issue, which is due January 31st. And our partners at Community Legal Services have significantly more information, but this is an urgent issue, and I thank the body for considering it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the creation of a Department of Labor and a Board of Labor Standards to provide for the powers and duties of such department and such board and to otherwise provide for the incorporation of the department and board into the city government.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I am introducing three ordinances and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14, 905, entitled non-accessory signs by adding a new subsection to permit an advertising sign under certain terms and conditions.
For the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the procurement department on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into one or more agreements with a vendor or vendors for the purchase and servicing of online legal research services, investigative tools, and related goods and services.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by creating a new chapter requiring that certain employers provide paid family and medical leave to eligible employees under specific circumstances and providing for funding, enforcement, and penalties.
Also refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Licenses and Inspections to conduct hearings to investigate the underground economy.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer three non-privileged resolutions on my behalf and one, no, three privileged resolutions on my behalf and one non-privileged resolution signed by all members in attendance today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's living legends Lynette Brown-Sowell, Dr. Constance Clayton, Gregorio Paccoholon, Dr. Naomi Johnson Booker, and the Honorable Frederica A. Messiah Jackson, who are leaders in Philadelphia in their respective fields of behavioral health, education, art, music, and the justice system as part of the commemoration of Black History Month.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings to determine what efforts and resources can be implemented to improve the city's homicide clearance and conviction rates and explore best practices nationwide in solving murders.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the efforts of jurors who fulfill one of the most important civic duties and designating January 30, 2020, as Juror Appreciation Day in the City of Philadelphia.
Also on today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing council to retain counsel to file a lawsuit compelling the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to carry out its obligation to protect the citizens of Pennsylvania by enacting and authorizing municipalities to enact common sense constitutional legislation and addressing the public health crisis of gun violence.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman John, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
I know you cannot speak on resolutions because of your position, but I'm thankful that you put this in first day of session to take a look at what's going on in Philadelphia, to bring it to a level of priority, and I think it takes a great deal of courage and fortitude to deal with the powers that be at the state level to make sure you safeguard the citizens of Philadelphia. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. It's called a sense of urgency. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have three resolutions and two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Section 19, 1301.1 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to increase the amount of the homestead exclusion.
For the committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Moore Street, 26th Street, Moore Street, and 27th Street.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings to continue to examine the prevalence of workplace misclassification, also known as payroll fraud.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings examining strategies to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion in Philadelphia's technology sector.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Gun Violence Prevention to hold hearings to examine the effect of gun violence on victims and co-victims as well as the resources available to them.
Today's calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. I have two bills, two non-privileged resolutions, and four privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter entitled Referendum Approved by the Voters by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the council of the City of Philadelphia to adopt a system of public financing of campaigns for city-elected offices.
For the committee.
And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of a proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to revise and clarify rules pertaining to prohibited activities of city officers and employees, including restrictions on city officials and employees with respect to political activities.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings regarding the scheduled termination of the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings regarding the anti-gun violence movement at Man Up PHL. And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to conduct hearings regarding the establishment of an independent fiscal office for the City of Philadelphia. And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings regarding public banking.
Those four privileged resolutions will be on today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution submitting to the electors of the city an amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter entitled Referendum Approved by the Voters by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the council of the City of Philadelphia to adopt a system of public financing of campaigns for city-elected offices.
For the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to revise and clarify rules pertaining to prohibited activities of city officers and employees, including restrictions on city officials and employees with respect to political activities, and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
For the committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. I have one resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold hearings to explore rent control in the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Morning, Council.
Morning.
Council President.
Morning.
Resolution I like to be heard on one of the bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And an ordinance amending Section 19, 1308 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refund and Forgiveness for Property Income to revise the tax rate.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
The bill I'm going to speak to is the second bill.
Oh, the next one? That will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide that council members shall not be eligible for election for more than four terms of office and authorizing the appropriate offices to publish notice and make arrangements for special election.
Bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for a limitation of council members' terms in office to no more than four terms and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes council, I'm sorry.
That's what I want to speak on.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
That's okay. So today I'm introducing a resolution along with Councilmember Green and cosponsors Squilla, Gim, Brooks, and Gautier that would amend the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter by providing a limitation of council members' terms in office to no more than four terms starting in January of 2024. Additionally, I'm requesting this charter change be placed on the ballot of the next election as a referendum for voters to decide. It's a forward-thinking policy that eight of the 10 largest cities in the United States have already adopted. Some of the benefits include increased diversity in candidates and creates a more engaging democratic process for voters, moves officials to make bold policy decisions in seeking solutions, providing for more public debate, and requires officials to make the most of their time with a finite deadline, ultimately serving those who put them in office. I encourage all my council colleagues in joining me to support this resolution and allow Philadelphians, those we are elected to serve, to decide if they want their council members to have term limits. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
Good morning, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. I have one resolution to offer today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the nationally-ranked Blackhawks Athletic Club on the occasion of being named both 2019 Pop Warner Super Bowl Champions and 2019 UYFL United Youth Football League Champions.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
On behalf of Councilmember O'Neill, I want to offer three bills and two resolutions on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Chapter 14, 500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section 14, 514 entitled FNE Far Northeast Overlay District.
For the committee.
And an ordinance establishing no truck parking and tow-away regulations on Chesterfield Road.
For the committee.
And an ordinance establishing no truck parking tow-away regulations on Grant Avenue.
For the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the appointment of a chief ethics officer for the Council of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing request to the Law Department to represent City Council and appeals from decisions of the Philadelphia Zoning Board of adjustment and if the Law Department declines to render such services to council, authorizing the retention of outside council to provide such services.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Councilman, did you have all of those for O'Neill? Did that include yours also?
No.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill, one privileged resolution, and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Miselenus by adding a new Chapter 21, 3200 entitled Business Improvement Districts and Special Services Districts to establish uniform procedures for the filing of objections by affected property owners against the formation of Business Improvement Districts and Special Services Districts.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution commemorating the 20th anniversary of the Woodland String Band's first trip to march in the St. Patrick's Day Parade in McRum County Cork, Ireland.
That will be on today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution supporting the inclusion of Mifflin Square Park and the 7th Street Corridor in the Pennsylvania Council on the Arts Creative Communities Pilot Initiative.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming South Clarion Street between Reed and Dickinson Streets as Anna de Fusco Way.
Also on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Excuse me, two privileged resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance amending Title 10, and ordinance amending Title 10, 613 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity prohibiting certain racially insensitive conduct in public places, including the wearing of blackface, all under certain terms and conditions.
For the committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Alney Avenue and North 15th Street, Nidro Avenue and Old York Road, Chu Avenue and North 18th Street, Avitzford Avenue and Squillier Street, Carlisle Street and Duncan Street, Lindley Avenue and North 15th Street, North 19th Street, and Chu Avenue.
For the committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Indiana Street and Broad Street, North 15th Street and Tioga Street, North 16th Street and Ontario Street to Butler Street.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Reverend Robert H. Paul and the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local 19 for over 15 years of commitment and dedication to the Piney Grove Baptist Church Tutorial Program and their commitment to the surrounding community.
And that will be on today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Hashimu Hiaramogi for a lifetime of service as a print and broadcast journalist, professor, and political consultant. of service as a print and broadcast journalist, professor, and political consultant.
And that will also be on today's calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. Offer eleven bills, five nonprivileged resolutions, one on behalf of City Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And ordinance repealing an ordinance approved the eleventh day of January nineteen fifty declaring the intention of the city of Philadelphia to organize and authorize the organization of a parking authority under the Act of June five nineteen forty-seven. Public Law four fifty-eight is amended by Act number two seventy-six. And an ordinance authorizing city officials to file articles of incorporation to establish a nonprofit corporation that shall be called the Philadelphia School Teachers and Reimbursement Fund Incorporated for the purpose of reimbursing personal money spent by teachers of the Philadelphia School District for the purchase of supplies, materials, and equipment needed for classrooms. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty within the general fund from the Office of Innovation and Technology, the Department of Public Health, and the Civil Service Commission to the Director of Finance, Community College of Philadelphia. And an ordinance amending title nineteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections to provide for transfer of delinquent taxes and fees to a qualified third-party law firm or collection agency. And an ordinance amending title twenty-one of the Philadelphia Code entitled miscellaneous by adding a new chapter twenty-one thirty-one hundred entitled Voting Machine Languages Requirement. And an ordinance amending title two of the Philadelphia Code entitled City-City Consolidation, Chapter two three hundred, Property Assessment, by adding new language to Section two three oh five Office of Property Assessment Chief Assessment Officer Powers and Duties requiring that real estate taxes imposed by Title nineteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections, Chapter nineteen thirteen hundred, Real Estate Taxes, be levied on the assessed value of taxable real property as established for the immediately preceding stated year in any year in which the audit provided for under subsection two three oh five, subparagraph two, subparagraph F, finds that overall property assessments in the city do not meet industry standards for accuracy. And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide accountability to City Council for real property assessment increases and authorizing the appropriate officers to fix the date for the election for such purpose. And an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by City Council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter so that there shall be established in the legislative branch of the city of Philadelphia government, the Legislative Budget Office by the addition of a new section two one oh five to Article two Legislative Branch, the Council, its election organization, and powers and duties, Chapter one, the Council, renumbering current sections two one oh five and two one oh six, fixing the date for the special election for such purpose, prescribing the form of ballot question to be voted on, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and make arrangements for the special election. And an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter so that there shall be imposed upon the city of Philadelphia's pension and retirement systems financial discipline by amending Section three eight oh three of Article three, our executive and administrative branch, organization, Chapter eight, independent boards and commissions, to rebalance the membership of the board of pensions and retirement by adding independent experts. And an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of a proposal set forth in the resolution approved by City Council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the operating budget and providing for a mandatory fifty million dollar minimum annual appropriation to the Housing Trust Fund or any such successor financial facility or such successor financial facilities, and authorizing the appropriate officers to fix the date for the special election for such purpose. And an ordinance amending title twenty of the Philadelphia Code entitled Officers and Employees, Chapter twenty-seven hundred, Defense and Endenification, by adding new language to provide protection for disclosures of sexual harassment and immunity for cooperation against sexual harassers all under certain terms and conditions.
Is that it, Mr. Decker? Those eleven bills just read by the chief clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a nonprivileged resolution approving the reappointment of Andre McCrory to the Reverend's Advisory Commission.
That will be on next week's calendar.
And a nonprivileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide accountability to City Council for real property assessment increases and providing for the submission of the proposed amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
For the committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter so that there shall be established in the legislative branch of the city of Philadelphia government, the Legislative Budget Office.
For the committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter so that there shall be imposed upon the city of Philadelphia's pension and retirement system financial discipline.
For the committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the operating budget and providing for a mandatory fifty million dollar minimum annual appropriation to the Housing Trust Fund.
And that will be referred to committee. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. We offer one additional privileged resolution, co-sponsored with Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution recognizing January twenty-three, two thousand twenty as Maternal Health Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia to remember all the women who died from complications of pregnancy or childbirth.
And that will be on this week's calendar. That concludes our introduction in bills and resolutions, and there are no reports from committee today. So our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. There are no bills on our first reading calendar, so the chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolution of bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolution is being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today, number two zero 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 one. There are, there are no other resolutions or bills on the second reading and final passage calendars for today.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Before we have a vote or any action on any bill or resolution, we will have our public comment session. Our public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage today, which there is only one, you may please sign up to the left if you haven't already done so. When your name is called, go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium. When that light on that device turns green, it will be your time to speak. And when the light turns yellow, you have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. And when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Joe Dennehall, commenting on two zero 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 one.
Good morning. This city needs to follow the rules of government and immediately remedy all official decrees of the people as required by law. This is an official decree of the people, remandamis quo warranto, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to government, probably unlawfully. Twenty-six years ago, I learned the deed for a home in Philadelphia was a fraud. Can a government that prints and backs this apparently fraudulent deed unlawfully strip people of their God-given rights without fear of prosecution? Is the Commonwealth refusing to arrest officials violating constitutions and laws? Has sure transferred deeds, in my case, without due process? Has Attorney General refused to prosecute and perform their known duty or task? Is the federal government protecting me from this invasion and trespass as required by Article four, Section four of the U.S. Constitution? A threat to one man's liberty is a threat to all. The constitutions require me remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two USC ninety-eight-two, ninety-eight-three, ninety-eight-five, ninety-eight-six, ninety-eight-seven, eighteen USC two forty-one, two forty-two, twenty-three-eight-one, twenty-three-eight-four, PA Constitution, Article one, Sections one through twenty-eight, twenty-six, P.A., CSA, seven oh three, seven oh five, seven oh eight, seven oh nine, seven eleven, seven twelve, seven thirteen, seven sixteen, nine oh two, and other laws listed, SCOTUS fifteen-eight-nine sixty-five, fourteen-one-three-three-oh, fourteen-four-oh-five-six, appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and the legal deed transfer of my home, ten thirty-eight West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given forty-two USC ninety-eight-two property rights for twenty-six years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution, and law be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes law cooperation to create and allow all of this monumental corruption.
Just wanted to remind individuals testifying on public comment, your subject matter should have something to do with what's on the calendar today. There's actually only one bill, but I anticipate that it will be somewhat difficult to getting people to adhere to that guideline today. So this is the first day I'm going to kind of like look the other way.
Commenting on two zero 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 one.
Yes, good morning. First and foremost, I would like to welcome the new council members to City Council and thank some of these new and old members for introducing some bold resolutions today, including rent control and term limits. We appreciate people coming in, and that's what I wanted to come. This resolution is about the rules. I didn't get to read the rules because the agenda was not available, but I want to talk about the rules of council, both written and unwritten, and make a plea to the new people coming in that the people of Philadelphia voted you guys in because we need a change. We don't need you guys to come in here and continue on with business as usual. We believe in you guys, and we need to change. The city is sick. The city is suffering. Business as usual has failed, time and time again. Come into council and be the change. Remember the people that you were before you got voted into council. Remember the issues that drove you to take that step and run for council. I bring my children here once a month to see my government in action, and all they've seen is corruption and complacency since they've been coming here. And I told my children that some new people have been voting into council, and I believe that they will serve the needs of the people. Don't worry about the bullying. Don't worry about following suit. You have standing to file legislation against the council president or any other member of council that gives you a hard time or puts you in an uncomfortable or unsafe work environment for standing up for what is right. People should not need a voucher to live in the neighborhood that they grew up in. People should not have to not know what's going on in their neighborhood until it's happening. People should not feel like when they come to council, they're going to be drug out by the police or looked at or laughed at or spoke to in a condescending manner. Don't forget who you are. Don't forget where you came from. You have people that will back you up and that will support you. I want to believe in you guys. I voted for some of you guys, and I just really like, don't be the person that just goes down in history as another crooked, corrupt, or complacent city council member. Be the person that goes down in history as somebody that people will remember and love. Be the person like Roe versus Wade, Brown versus Board of Education. I know you're council people and not laws, but I'm just saying, be a person that we will remember in Philadelphia. This, this city is suffering. It needs healing, and nothing that's been going on in here has worked. So please try something different.
Thank you for your testimony.
Kara Rabatou.
Commenting on two zero 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 one.
Hi, my name is Kara Rabatou, and I'm here as a Philadelphia, okay, thank you, here as a Philadelphia citizen. I'm a constituent in Jamie Gautier's district and a healthcare worker. Regarding the resolutions, I would like to join Jennifer in welcoming the city council members, old and new, today to, to council. I also voted for plenty of you, and I look forward to doing work with y'all and making Philadelphia better service citizens. We'll keep it really brief. I appreciate, I'm also here as a member of the Black and Brown Workers Cooperative, working in coalition with Occupy PHA to support housing rights, democratize land, and restore justice for those harmed by displacement and evictions without just cause. As a healthcare worker, I think it's important that it, that the issues that have been presented in the resolutions today about housing, and I've heard the word sense of urgency, that you just understand that displacement is very urgent. And I have a whole couple of papers of topics that we've been wanting to talk about with certain council members that I won't go into right now. But for those council members who've agreed to meet with us and work together with us, we thank you for your time. And for those who we haven't heard from yet, we hope to hear from you soon. And I'll just close with basically that our goal is to get legislation that supports the right of first refusal for tenants facing mass eviction without just cause and community, community land trust funded by municipal dollars provided by the Philadelphia Land Bank and ending council manic prerogative that's an undemocratic process that leads to the displacement of so many of Philadelphia's low-income citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, we now consider the sole resolution is on the second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read that title.
Resolution number two zero 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 one entitled, "The Resolution to Provide Rules for the Government of the Council of the City of Philadelphia."
Thank you. And the chair now recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment on, on your behalf to resolution number two zero 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 one. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably seconded that the amendment to resolution number two zero 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 one be adopted. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution has been amended. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez for a motion on the amended resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution as amended.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the resolution as amended be adopted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions today?
A resolution authorizing the Committees on Labor and Civil Service and Public Safety to hold joint hearings regarding hiring, staffing, and retention challenges for the nine-one-one Unified Call Center and the impact these challenges have on the health and well-being of nine-one-one dispatchers introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on its one-hundredth anniversary introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of its twenty-eighth annual African-American Children's Book Fair introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Fiscal Stability and New Governmental Cooperation to conduct hearings to determine the city of Philadelphia's preparedness for the possibility of an economic recession and the strength of the reserve stabilization the possibility of an economic recession and the strength of the reserves stabilization funds introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair one more time recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Licenses and Inspections to conduct hearings to investigate the underground economy introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Come on, guys. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's living legends, Lynette Brown So, Dr. Constance Clayton, Gregorio Pak Kohlun, Dr. Naomi Johnson Booker, and the Honorable Frederica A. Messiah Jackson, who are leaders in Philadelphia in their respective fields of behavioral health, education, art, music, and the justice system. As part of the commemoration of Black History Month introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am enthusiastic and move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold public hearings to determine what efforts and resources can be implemented to improve the city's homicide clearance and conviction rates, and explore best practices nationwide in solving murders introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the efforts of jurors who fulfill one of the most important civic duties and designating January 30, 2020, as Juror Appreciation Day in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings examining strategies to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion in Philadelphia's technology sector introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings to examine the prevalence of workplace misclassification, also known as payroll fraud introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Gun Violence Prevention to hold hearings to examine the effect of gun violence on victims and co-victims, as well as the resources available to them introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings regarding the scheduled termination of the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings regarding the anti-gun violence movement at Man Up PHL introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to conduct hearings regarding the establishment of an independent fiscal office for the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings regarding public banking introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Home List to hold hearings to explore rent control in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Brooks.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. I move to adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the nationally ranked Blackhawks Athletic Club on the occasion of being named both 2019 Pop Warner Super Bowl Champions and 2019 UYFL, United Youth Football League Champions introduced by Councilman Thomas on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair enthusiastically recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I ask that we move to adopt the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution commemorating the 20th anniversary of the Woodland String Band's first trip to march in the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Mcrum County Cork, Ireland introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Reverend Robert H. Paul and the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local 19 for over 15 years of commitment and dedication to the Piney Grove Baptist Church Tutorial Program and their commitment to the surrounding community introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Hashimu Yaromogi for a lifetime of service as a print and broadcast journalist, professor, and political consultant introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make some remarks before we call for a vote. And by now, we all know that we lost a great warrior, a fighter for the people, a consummate professional, and our friend, Hashimu Yaromogi. I think we were all shocked to hear of his passing, an undeniable loss to our city. We in this body often refer to members of the press as the 18th member of councils, council, and yet he was truly the 18th member. For more than 40 years, Hashimu informed, entertained, and engaged us through newspaper articles he wrote for the Philadelphia Tribune, the Philadelphia Daily News, the Philadelphia Inquirer, and the Neighborhood Leader, a newspaper he owned and operated. We will miss his voice on WDAS, WHYY, WPN, and the many other radio stations where he delivered news and interviewed guests on talk shows. Hundreds of aspiring journalists of color considered him their mentor and knew that they could count on him for advice and counsel. The Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists, which he served as past president, awarded him with their highest honor, the organization's Lifetime Achievement Award. He wore so many hats in the communications industry, including professor and lecturer, media consultant, and advisor to the political campaigns of many. And speaking of hats, he wore them well. I remember him as a fashion plate with a wardrobe full of colorful clothing that reflected his deep connection to his African roots and culture. Hashimu was serious about his work, which was caring and looking out for the best interests of his people, and that was all people. He didn't suffer fools lightly. Knowing the challenges our neighborhoods faced, he knew the critical urgency at hand. He didn't have time for foolishness. You better come at him and have yourself together, or he would get you together. He was firm and gentle and supportive all at the same time. I'm really going to miss him, and I can only say if you never had an opportunity to meet him, I can only tell you that you really missed out. My condolences to his daughter, Asia, his son, Anwar, his partner, Tremaine, and to the countless other loving relatives and friends whom mourn his passing. And so... And so, we all say farewell to our friend, Hashimu Yaromogi. Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to request a standing silent vote. Thank you.
Please stand. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing January 23, 2020, as Maternal Health Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia to remember all the women who died from complications of pregnancy or childbirth introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Mr. Council President, I would just like to announce to the public that on January 28, I will be hosting my 8th Annual Youth Nonprofit Symposium, which is a symposium simply about how you get funds for your nonprofit that serves children and youth. It's going to be from 9:00 to 2:00 at Pierce College, 1420 Pine Street. It's free, it's a great event. We'll have Stacy Scott, the president, executive director of Health Partners Foundation, along with 14 other funders, both corporate and foundation. I'd just like to say welcome to my new colleagues. For those of you that are at large, what I found out when I got elected, as people came to me to ask for money, that I had none to give them. That's what happens when you're at large councilperson. And so, I eventually, in order to try to provide funding to them, introduced them to corporate corporations and foundations, and eventually put together an event once a year where the public can come and ask for money, seek funding, have breakout sessions, understand what is being funded, why it's being funded, and how you apply. And so, I welcome everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmen. On behalf of the majority, chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Today, I rise to thank you and my colleagues, Councilmembers Kenyatta Johnson and Curtis Jones Jr. for introducing resolutions regarding the ongoing public safety and gun violence crisis we are facing in our city. When a child is no longer safe in their mother's arms in their own home, or when someone is shot on Kelly Drive, or in the case of my cousin, John William Rawls Jr., who was shot and killed in an attempted robbery on the front steps of his home this past Saturday. His murder marked the 25th homicide this year. He was a hard-working man who took care of his family. It appears no measure of innocence can be protected from senseless gun violence. As a mother of young children, the idea of having my child's precious life stolen from my arms is unfathomable, and I cannot accept this in our city or in any city. We are in a state of emergency in the city of Philadelphia regarding gun violence, and we need to declare one. I repeat, we are in a state of emergency in the city of Philadelphia regarding gun violence, and we need to declare one. With children and families living in terror, we need to act quickly to be able to call ourselves leaders of strong moral standing. In order to stop such evil from occurring again, we need to address more than just restrictions on physical firearms. We need to take preventative action so there will never need to be a porch covered in sympathy balloons and stuffed animals to honor another life gone far too soon. Our city council must continue to tackle the social determinants of manifested poverty head-on in the next budget cycle, including a keen focus on promoting conflict resolution in our schools and communities. We must support community groups and leaders on the ground doing the hard but necessary work involved in increasing the general public safety and welfare. Through researching community-based policing strategies that have been successful in cities plagued with deep poverty like Chicago, we could likely implement these strategies in our own backyards and neighborhoods. Finally, we need to be willing to hold ourselves accountable for our family, friends, and neighbors when they are involved in criminal activity. I hope this is the last time we have to offer our thoughts and prayers, and I hope last night was my last time attending a candlelight vigil. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to congratulate all my colleagues for four more years of doing great work for the city of Philadelphia and all the constituents that we represent. We have a lot of unfinished business. We have some new business that confronts our city on a daily basis, and my heart goes out for Kathy, Councilwoman, you and your family. And you know, this council will do all what it takes, led by our council president, to ensure that Philadelphia is able to make its laws against illegal guns. You know, based on what we heard here today, as far as introductions from members, I think 2020 is going to be the year of the worker for Philadelphia. So today, I want to talk about another community that is on our minds, and that's our students, teachers, and staff with the Philadelphia School District. The experience that our students, teachers, and staff have learned and worked with will define our Philadelphia future for generations to come, and this is why the stories about the conditions of our school buildings are so concerning. As we speak, we've got countless numbers of school buildings that have significant issues. Now, more than ever, we need leaders who are going to come together to find solutions quickly and aggressively. To the Department of Health and the related departments here in the city of Philadelphia, families of the city of Philadelphia need to be educated about ways and the places they live and the places that they work, and how it impacts their health. We should start by educating people about asbestos. Asbestos is far more common than most people realize, particularly given the age of the buildings and the homes that we live in. The danger of asbestos occurs when friable asbestos is particledized. So the public needs to know what that means, what to look for, and what they need to do and what they need not to do when it comes to disturbing anything that may be friable asbestos. To the PFT and the school district, we need to work together as partners to help monitor the response to the environmental issues that the school district has identified. We need to improve and strengthen protocols related to addressing these problems that has been built by these environmental issues that all parties can agree to with these protocols, and that we can move quickly. And I'm asking that a third-party oversight and the resources be designated to monitor the process in these protocols, and we need to prepare to be proactive about these issues in the future. Addressing these issues of asbestos is just the tip of the iceberg, as we all know. We've had plenty of hearings when we were talking about lead paint remediation and other hazardous conditions. And I'm confident that every member of this body will do all that is necessary to support the PFT and the school district's effort to ensure that our buildings are made safe places to foster learning and a work environment in the future. So that is my call today, as we all band together to address some of these issues and kind of situations that our families are enduring, and the uncertainties and the lack of knowledge. So I believe with these protocols that can be put in place and the education that should be taught throughout our school and our neighborhoods and to our parents and our children is vital as we approach and start 2020. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiyoona Sanchez.
Thank you. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge, recognize, and welcome our new colleagues, as well as the senior members of council, back into school session. I just want to remind my colleagues that after council, we will be having a briefing by- I just want to remind my colleagues that after council, we will be having a briefing by Global Philadelphia Association and its executive directors. GPA is dedicated to boosting the greater Philadelphia's region global profile and promoting and enhancing Philadelphia's heritage. It was founded in 2010 and partners with tourism outlets, educational institution, government leaders, corporations in the international and global market. Now in 10 years of operation, GPA manages our World Heritage City Project. And as you know, Philadelphia was the first city in the United States of America to have this designation. And we want to maximize this potential to draw tourism and millions of dollars to the city. So I ask all of the council members to join me after council. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Good afternoon. I would like to just say thank you to my Alliance of Just Philadelphia family, as well as thank you to my council colleagues now for allowing this historical opportunity. When I read it says Matur minority party, and we all have minority parties here in city council, and we've never seen that before. And I just want to say thank you for allowing this opportunity for us to see something different in council. And I'm excited for the continued work that we can do together. And I look to be a bridge between the advocacy and activism work that I've done prior to council and now on this legislative side for us to really be able to get things done and move Philadelphia in a new direction. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Don. Change. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment and echo the sentiments of my colleagues. And as one of the four freshmen coming into council who don't have your traditional political background, I wanted to first thank you, as well as all of my current colleagues, for all the support, tutoring sessions and philosophical sessions that we went through as we prepared for not just inauguration, but also to transition to this moment. And I also wanted to take a minute to thank the tech staff and the support staff here at city council for supporting my team and my staff and allowing us to be here today in a way that we feel comfortable and, most importantly, ready to serve the citizens of Philadelphia. So thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues. And again, thank you, tech staff. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to join my colleagues in welcoming everyone. Welcome to our new members. Welcome back to our old members. And there's no better way to welcome you than with a briefing. And so, I wanted to just remind everyone to join me for a briefing by the administration related to the mayor's executive order establishing the Office of Children and Families scheduled for today at 2 o'clock in room 576 in City Hall. The executive order makes significant changes to the management reporting structure of the Department of Human Services and the Mayor's Office of Education, which oversees important programs, including pre-K and community schools. And so, both Councilwoman Gimm and I have worked to make this briefing available. And we certainly hope that people will take advantage of the opportunity and get information on these changes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Council President. I want to first start by offering my deepest condolences to my colleague, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, and her family on the loss of her family member. And I also want to thank you for your poignant remarks on the need for us to address gun violence in our communities with urgency. Good morning, everyone. My colleagues already know this, of course. But for everyone joining us today, this is my first council meeting as a third district representative. And I wanted to... Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to take this opportunity to say how honored I am to be here. It's such a privilege to be able to serve my neighbors in West and Southwest Philly and to work alongside my fellow council members to affect meaningful change in our city. I want us to use our power as a legislative body to bridge the gap between those who have and those who don't. I fully believe that if we work together, we can stop displacement in our neighborhoods, pull people out of poverty, and provide every child in every community with the high-quality public education they deserve. I want us to harness new ideas and help Philly become a leader in sustainability and green jobs. And I want us to empower our citizens to engage with the development happening in their communities so that they don't wake up to places they no longer recognize and feel welcomed in. It's been a long journey here, and it's very exciting to finally get started. I look forward to the work ahead of us this session, to learning from and partnering with all of my colleagues, and to bringing my best to this effort every single day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilwoman. That concludes our speeches. Members of council, before we adjourn, I just want to say congratulations to everyone for their election or reelection. We look forward to another productive four years to our newest members. Although you stood on the stage at the Met, great place, our digs are not quite as slick as the Met. But the simple reality is that the real inauguration is here in your first session of council. So I just want to congratulate you all and look forward to working with you so much. So with that, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, January 30, 2020 at 10 a.m.
Can I get a second? Thank you. It's been moved in probably second that the council stand adjourned until Thursday, January 30, 2020, 10 a.m. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.